Couple of housekeeping items, Merrill is not here at this meeting. He will however be with us in the meeting tonight at 6 o'clock. And those that are online, you are muted, and during the meeting if you should have a reason to want to talk, just hold your hands up and you will be recognized. And then Michelle will allow you to come into the meeting. I may have a motion for the minutes of August 16th.
Still moved.
Second?
Properly moved. And second, for the approval of the minutes, all those in favor, use a sign of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. I need a motion for the financial report.
Still moved.
Got a first?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, use a sign of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion is carried. The first order of business is coming from the Elton Farmers Market, an update, and that's from Alicia Calhoun, Elton Alliance, and I believe we all should have received a letter from her on yesterday. If not, she will thoroughly explain, and she has been assisted by none other.
Thank you, everyone, for your time today. What I sent yesterday was a PowerPoint which included an update to the work that we've done since May, when Danielle was here to present on behalf of the Alliance our initiative to get a grant to revitalize the farmers market down on Bow Street. So if you do or do not have a copy of that presentation in front of you, I'll go ahead and go through it. We had some goals in place. The pictures on the very front of it is, the first picture is what the farmers market currently looks like. The second picture is our vision. It's what we would love it to look like when we are done doing the updates and revitalization for the farmers market. We have had several quotes come in based on the work that was slated to be done. We have repairs to the current structure, an estimated amount of $12,450, and that is for painting the roof both on top and underneath, as well as the posts and the fascia, as well as repairs to the structure that's currently there, removal of rotted wood, gutters that need to be replaced, and installing new gutters and downspouts as well. All in all, that estimate is $20,330 for that piece of the project. Beyond that, we have proposed that we have new signage to bring visibility to the farmers market, and bring into light what we want it to be in its future. So signage overall, the estimates to get that done are $3,343. And then marketing is the final expense with the current project goals, with a total of $1,000. So all in, all of those numbers added up is $24,723 for the work that is slated to be done in what I'm calling Phase 1. The VLT grant that we did receive was approved at $18,000, and as we all know, that is not a zero balance, so we have a gap of a little over $6,700 if we wanted to go ahead and get the work done as been slated in the project for Phase 1 to date. Beyond that, that's just structural. That's just getting us to a place where we can get some more vendors down there and get some visibility to the farmers market.
I hate to cut you off, but do you have vendors approaching you wanting space down there?
I have done outreach to the vendors, to other vendors, because of the way it's looking, and because of Matt's the only one down there right now.
It's a hard sell.
It's a hard sell, and I don't know, Michelle would be the one to answer questions anybody's ever called to do outreach to request information on it.
What kind of call?
That's what I'm wondering.
A couple of people have wanted to do crafts, a couple of people handles to baked goods, that type of thing.
Is there a reason why they haven't come forward?
Couple of reasons, one of which, if you want to do baked goods, you can have to go through the order of health, Cecil County Health Department, so that they can inspect your kitchen. If you want to certain kinds of crafts, because we want specifically homegrown, we don't want you to resell things down there, don't want to turn it into a flea market type of thing. So we've always concentrated, and the rules include that it should be a homegrown environment, so to speak, as opposed to selling to insurance.
And I would add to that, Jean, just to, and Rob, you know, the outreach, I've had some conversations with Councilman Al Miller about the need for something like this in the northern part of the county, and he has expressed that there would be an interest if it was a more attractive environment, and attractive not just being visibility, but again, visible, marketable, and having the patronage. We can't get the patronage if it's not looking up to par, we can't get the vendors because we don't have patrons if it's not up to par. So we discussed, you know, having some of the local cheese manufacturers come, we've talked, I've reached out to places like Sudler'sville Meat Locker, all these different places that I've seen in other farmers markets, but they're local and in our background. So I think to the point of what it is today, what it can become, if you build it, they will come, it has to be a little bit of a mindset, just to be able to get to a certain place of marketability.
And there's stuff like that, wouldn't it just kind of generally be like a weekend event?
I would leave that to Alicia and Michelle to discuss.
Like, you know, Friday through?
Currently, I believe we have specific things.
Yeah, well, and it's interesting, I've talked to a couple of potential vendors, and they've said, "We are packed on the weekends, we would be very interested in thinking about like a Thursday, Friday spot at your place." I've reached out to Stafford's Farm, I've reached out, you know, to Al Miller's family regarding fresh flowers, I've talked to the Cecil County School of Tech around the items that they grow, trying to keep that in that local area. So I think there's some opportunity, it's the chicken and the egg, what comes first.
Yeah, but first attract, yeah, this building has to be done.
Yeah.
And also, if I can also interject, one of the visions that I'd always hoped for down there was, if you imagine San Francisco, you've got, what is that, Chesapeake?
Chesapeake, yeah.
Yeah, gold. So think of having them down there, right? You've got a little, a couple of samples, and you pass them on a plate, you got maybe all the space on paint, and you do your samples, well, guess what, you can buy this plate right away, or something from the town page, and if you start tying all these things in together, sell coffee in the morning from Main Street, you know you can go right up there and get that, or you can go over there and get a scoop. All these things start setting in, and that's, it would be perfect, and then we can just keep this nice little marketing event going.
That's a great vision.
I personally, you need to have set dates to start, they have to be repetitive, they have to, people have to know that, "Oh, I missed it this weekend, I can go next Thursday."
And we do that.
Is there something in the contract with the vendors, if they have to be there certain times?
Michelle just manages the applications.
Not, it doesn't say that you have to be there, et cetera, et cetera, but that being said, there's never been a question, let me back up, there were a couple of times where we did have to say, "Are you going to be here, et cetera?" But when it comes to Matt and the other produce vendors, we got that, we got that to say, "Would you show up or what?"
Yeah, you need consistency.
Matt's been very consistent.
I'm sure we'll get there.
We market Matt's times because he has given me the times that he is there, and so we've been very comfortable every week marketing the days and times that he's there, which are always consistent.
And if we had a slated vendor list that was more than one produce, you know, production person, we would be able to filter that out and say, "Our," and even say to our prospects, "Our busiest times are Thursday," or, you know, whatever it might be, to help attract and get that commitment. But yeah, I think when we did the outdoor seating request, one of the requirements was, you had to be open so many hours within the week in order to be able to have that outdoor seating. And it was for that same reason, we didn't want to create this environment without the patrons being available to, you know, particular services. So similar thought process with the farmers market would be, you know, we're creating this great space in order to participate, and for us to bring people, you have to be committed as well. Do you continue?
So Phase 2, and just my vision, has been the Need for More Landscaping down there. There's a rain garden that was created by Elton High School's team, I've reached out to them to see if they'd be interested in helping us clean that back up again, and they are. I think we could do some lighting, we don't have electric down there for obvious reasons, for flooding and things like that, but I think some solar lighting, maybe on top of the building, could be in order. And then, I think Danielle, you mentioned seal coating, that parking lot, you know, would be appropriate to, in like a Phase 2 opportunity. So where I'm at right now is determining where the additional funds come from, how do we make up that gap of $6,700? We can reduce the work that's been planned to date, we have a bunch of vendors that are contractors on hold waiting for the next steps, we can reduce what we planned on doing. Doesn't really fit in line with what our vision is, but it's a possibility. We could pause the project as a whole to seek additional funding, or I'm open to any options that you guys may have on ways to get that additional funding.
So you're short $6,700 before Phase 2?
Before Phase 2. So in Phase 1 would essentially that picture that Alicia has on the first page of the farmers market, that the building would be attractive, and the signage would be attractive enough for us to really make that, "If you build it, they will come, go in the public local community for vendors." The set, being able to tell them our next grant cycle is coming in the spring for us to look for Phase 2, if it's not something we can facilitate in the meantime, is, I think, enough to hopefully get people on board. I don't know, I know the town does seal all their pavement work around, well, before the winter months, so I'm not sure if that's something that could be done within the town's existing scope of pavement modifications, and because it is just seal coating, or if that's something that we need a budget for, that's a question that I would have. That might be for Dan.
I was looking to see if he's up.
I know, I look too, I don't see him, I see Chip. And truly, I will be bold enough to say, our ask would be that, with it being the town property, is the town willing to make that difference so that we can move forward? That back parking lot, I think, for a long time, has been a little bit of an eyesore, and it is one of the main arteries into our town off of Bridge Street.
And what about the adjacent parking lot?
The municipal lot, back behind Frederick Ford and all that. I mean, that would, I think the town's, it would go on your punch list.
Because I'll tell you what, if your farmers market fills up, you're going to need that other lot to park.
Yeah, that would be an ideal goal to have.
And it should look like.
Cohesive, yes.
Well, there's an awful lot of parking out there. The only time I see that parking lot full is like when there's little league games or a parade or something, you know, there's a lot of parking.
It's kind of disheveled.
It is, and with the work that some of the businesses on Main Street have done up at that end, look at all the ivy behind them, where they've got, you know, the black staircase that now comes down, I mean, with, I've talked to Charlie McCoy about, you know, kind of tying that look in, and making that be cohesive as well in that back parking lot. But ours looks great, you know, they've done a great job on their building, so how can we tie, yeah, how can we tie that in and make that a really nice additional piece of downtown?
Yeah. So have people tried any more grant money, as far as?
As of right now, grant cycles are a little bit out of pause, because typically they run through the spring. So we have our site set on some additional grants through National Main Street, I know Alicia's looked at one through T-Mobile and some other folks, but it's really timing on the cycle, and I think it would be more apt to fund our Phase 2 project, which would include the solar and some of the other things, but I think Phase 1, we really need to figure out if it's going to have to pause, or if we can find a funding for that $6,000 gap.
And then you've done little or no research on your cost for Phase 2, correct?
The Phase 2, we weren't really sure what the town would prefer as far as seal coating or paving, so we have not gone down that road. If there's any clarification from Dan, or from the town administration on that, that would be great for us to be a part of our Phase 2 projections, but I know Alicia's looked at some solar lighting, so we have them earmarked, Rob, but we haven't put them together as part of a presentation, because we needed to figure out funding on the first portion. If it's something you would like to see all as one project, we would be happy to put that together and give kind of a total funding cost for the solar lighting, the pavement, if we knew what we were working with, to do it all in one shot.
I've also talked to the School of Tech and Elton High School team about that rain garden since they did the work, and they are willing to jump in and help with the resources needed. They didn't have the manpower over the summer, because the kids are off, but she said, you know, "As I come into the fall, and as I talk to the town board," you know, to follow back up with her and let her know, you know, what she would, what we would need from them as far as resources. So I've had those conversations.
It needs a, do you want to pass one on? Our idea is our rain garden, it's been kind of my personal eyesore, I hate to throw that in there, but to have the parking, well, the parking barriers, the parking barriers alone, if we just removed those and put something like rain rocks that were around that circle would make such a big improvement. The overgrownness, you know, there's no color.
Yeah, that's what I envisioned when they first started talking about that. That just looks like an area that was left overgrown.
Yeah, and there was no, I don't think there was enough forethought into color, because there's no seasonality, there's no color blooms, there's, in the wintertime, it's basically, you know, your empty sticks hanging out there, so I think had good intentions, but with Alicia reaching out to School of Technology, and we've also talked with, and with the Master Gardeners.
I'm sure it functions the way it should, just look a little nicer.
It could probably function a little better, and I know with, I've talked to Dan Hanley, and he's gotten permission from Lewis to remove some of the dead trees on Main Street right in front of our building, and I feel like the little steps that we're taking will go a long way with the image of downtown, with, we got the lights up, you know, we're doing a lot of landscaping work, and VPW team has some ideas around landscaping right there on Main Street, you know, low maintenance stuff, bringing some color into the different seasons, and I think this would just be a nice connection into that.
As you move to solidify that structure there, were you planning to have enclosures, or was the structure just going to be left unopened? And I'm specifically talking maybe the winter time.
It's a pleasant.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be closed, it'll remain open.
Okay.
Yep. And that goes with, you know, a traditional image of a farmers market. Again, we don't want that flea market look, we don't want enclosures, we don't want booths, like that kind of structure, we want to keep it open and airy, and we want to have the flow of people, and that's why the landscaping is important, too.
We also want to outgrow the space itself. We have enough vendors to be able to expand into that nicely seal-coated parking lot. Would that be a great opportunity?
I'd like to see you build another building, like a T, off of that one, down toward the rain garden, and I'll put more.
Are you allowed to put?
First things first.
Rose, are you allowed to put any, like, pavers around that rain garden, like, where it could be like a sitting bench of some kind?
Well, it is on, and I don't know, Jean's on the line here, whether anything has to go through the equipalary commissioner or not, maintenance of the rain garden wouldn't probably, but if there's any added structures or anything.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, Dan joined in, I don't know if he has.
Awesome, you know that maybe?
That's the computer's hand, but I just asked.
I thought it looked like Dan's hand.
I was with the group from Elton High when they put the rain garden in, and you know, it was a project to make a difference, but basically, I just don't think there's any maintenance or upkeep with that project since its inception, and pretty much what you see now is what that developed into, or that you get it in the mail.
Yeah, that was the conversation I had with them, she said, "Alicia, we put it in," and then nothing has been done with it.
Can Cindy be the one to look into that?
No, he was part of flood mitigation, so.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I can ask him.
Is that rain garden? Rain garden could work, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, well, oh, I beg your pardon, but the reason I'm saying flood mitigation is because of that great big check valve that they put in between the parking lot and emptying into the creek, because it's large.
Oh, it's a vault, you mean?
The other thing that we'd like to see done, and I have some prices on it, but it wasn't in that first initial phase, is some new, I forget, green barrels, because the ones that are down there are just sad, you know, they've been painted over and peeled off, and that gives a really good image, too, and if we're going to have a rain garden, if we're going to have some, you know, floral items or plants and things down there, that rainwater from the rain barrels can also facilitate the watering of that, too, which is good for the apartment.
Where'd you get that, are plastic ones? You say they're in bad shape?
There's only one, the other ones have been taken, and they're sitting on like cinder blocks, so I would like a nice stand, and, yeah.
When you guys first started talking about redoing the farmers market, I know we talked about the poles that you're putting there for the foundation, is this something that's going to be rainproof, I mean, weatherproof? Remember we talked about when I'm on?
We talked, so one of the contractors we had talked with, there's, with the flooding that happens, depending on how long it takes to recede, you know, if we had a major storm like we know we've seen at times, it usually recedes pretty quickly still, I don't think we end up with it, that back lot in that area flooded for long periods of time, and they said specific weatherproof paint would protect the integrity of the wood that we're replacing. But it's not going to be a composite material, because that would be a totally different cost.
What I'm going to make is, and Lewis said it better than anybody, so it's a floodplain area, I don't see wasting money on sealing the parking lot.
Well, the parking lot being sealed is actually not just a mistake.
Based on the amount of floods that we had down there, I don't see wasting money on that right yet. I mean, get the foundation, whatever you want done, but I don't see wasting money on that.
I would agree with you that the foundation and the structure is the most important piece, but I will say that, and I just know this from having clients in the paving and seal coat business, it's more of a protection, because when you look at it, it's town property, and if you don't seal coat, it will crack, you will have foundation issues in the parking lot, and if somebody trips and falls, it's public property. So I do think there's a totally separate conversation around the integrity of the parking lot being town property, just kind of like the county court has to, I mean, it is floodplain, non-floodplain, but if it's a public parking lot, it does have to be maintained, and that's part of the maintenance. So whether it's scheduled this year, five years from now, it's going to be something that the town does, so we were thinking to make it a part of this project specifically.
The Department of Transportation, of course, has rights, I don't know if they have a new parking lot.
Does Dan, Dan is on the line, could you ask him a question? Dan, do you guys, with your paving contract that you put out annually, does that include seal coating, or is it simply blacktop replacement and repair?
Typically, blacktop replacement and repair for the public public roads.
Okay. With parking lot maintenance, are you guys involved in that, or is that an RFP, or is that as needed?
Look, it could be RFP, depends exactly as needed, it kind of works out, it depends on what the extent turns out to be, so.
Okay.
I have to, when we did the parking lot behind Minnehague around that one, that was something we did as part of the electric, we combined that, I thought it was a year ago that way, so we cleaned that one from around there, but the rest of it, please be part of, I feel like it's a little bit different from the typical road projects that we do, and that's why it's got a little wreck right now, so.
Okay.
The road project uses how we use the revenue that's supplied by the state, but the, can't use that on parking lots, you have to use separate, separate from mine.
Mike, you jumping in?
Please.
Please.
The parking lot behind Minnehague was done with, I believe it was strategic demolition funding.
Yes, you're right.
And I think the, it could either be community legacy or strategic demolition, I believe we could use those funds for public improvements.
I know you have a long laundry list, Jean, of projects that would qualify under those two grants, is that something that you see being feasible in the next 12 months for us to look to add that parking lot, or do you think that needs to be done with funds from somewhere else?
I think that, I think that this project would be done with a combination of funds. There is, I, do you receive Main Street funding, grant funding?
So Department of Housing and Community Development is really our connection to Main Street, Main Street specifically, National Main Street is more of the facilitation of available grants, we haven't received any monies that I know directly from Main Street.
Okay, well, we can look into it and see, there's always something new coming around with, the new grant here and there, so we could maybe cobble together a couple of different grants, I think most grantors like to see that, you like to see.
Yeah, they do, absolutely, and we've already, like Alicia said, we're already using the VLT grant from the county as the kickoff, so they can see that we've got a commitment and we are, you know, invested in that.
I, one of the things I wanted to do for the parking lot across the street from us is, we don't have any landscape islands in there, and if we dig up some of the asphalt and install landscape islands, that would help it with infiltration and stormwater, I would imagine. So there's other benefits to kind of redesigning the parking lots in a small way to encourage infiltration.
Sounds like we need to brainstorm meeting Jean on this, these two back parking lots.
I agree.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay. Well, if we table that portion, knowing that we're going to put heads together and figure that out, is it something that we can discuss our current gap, the phase that we want to start? The goal being that we can look to have the work done and have a really great spring opening. I mean, it's not going to be overnight, but if we wait and we get too far along, we're going to have weather, we're going to have, you know, there's already contractor backup, supply chain issues, so we want to make sure we know what to do with the project as it is today, with the current phase. That is Steve's question.
Well, I can tell, well, I don't know, I'm not going to speak to the entire board, but I think I'm under the impression that we don't particularly have that money to just hand out. I mean, there definitely has to be some investigation and.
Sure. If the town could consider any amount, I mean, one of the line items was marketing, of course, that's not an immediate need, that's something that we can look to raise funds for, look to other sources, grants, things like that, but I think the immediate need is simply the structural portion. So, I mean, if it's something that we can come back to or slice out, I mean, can I borrow that? Yeah, so if we're looking at the $20,000 number for the repairs to the current structure, that would include, basically create almost everything you see here, the additional part would just be the signage, which is $3,000, we're pretty close, it wouldn't be bigger than that.
So at this point, I guess you're going to proceed with talking with Jean Miller or whoever else, you need the support of that, as well as Steve, perhaps looking to see what available funds that we may add to assist them if that's true of all, or some figure.
Yeah, we could revise our ask to not include the immediate, like the marketing piece of it, and just be the structural repairs and signage, and give you that figure, and what would be the follow-up to that would be?
Before the board, if they can reach that, the point I know.
So it's fine?
Why do you lack right now?
You can get started on the structural part of it, right? I mean, am I reading this right, that all paint is $12,000, just for paint?
We're talking about the weatherproof paint, and we're also talking about the roof and the exterior and the interior.
And the labor.
And the labor. So, I mean, you're talking the interior, exterior, all the sides, and then the labor and the materials. I'll tell you, we're using a local contractor that definitely is doing us a little goodwill in that.
And so if he wasn't going to do goodwill for you, then the other contractor you may buy would be a little bit lower cost, like?
Absolutely. I would say you could plan on at least a 15% increase if we were going with a different contractor.
And I will say, as an aside, that the contractor that we are getting the quotes from is in the middle of some health issues, so there is a chance that we might end up having to get another quote.
I talked to him. I know, but I know his paper. Hopefully, we can get it. Hopefully, we can get it.
But I really would like to get moving on it for no, for no other reason other than we do have a solid, good quote and I would like to not lose out on the opportunity.
Yeah, your structural repairs are definitely a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. What is our law of just description versus the grant?
A couple thousand dollars.
Okay.
We got 18 from the grant and total structure is 20,330.
So if we made our ask $2,300, Steve, can we put that to you today and then?
See, I, I would first of all say you need to go with your grants and your funding that you guys have. Come to the board and then bring it to us, um, because right now you guys are proposing something to us and telling us what we have, not oh, what we, what we want to participate in. You guys explained it to us, told us what you're, you're doing, but I'm not, as, as far as the partner here, I'm not going to be, be, uh, above what Jean said. She's got some funding. See what she has first before you come to the board there, basically where I'm saying it.
I don't know that Jean would have any funding for the structural though.
Jean said there's several, Jean could just say what you said before about the funding. There's several, um, just say what you said earlier.
Yeah, we could, we could apply to a couple of different grant sources um for the project because the project has a couple of different components to it.
Okay.
But I'm happy to meet with, with you, uh, Alicia and um.
And I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be a standard here.
Yeah. My only concern would be like when we do need to talk about grant cycles and when that would come to fruition. Because I know the majority of our grant cycles have ceased and you would be looking at spring 2024 before you could apply. So that would be my only concern. I know there's definitely money next year, but um, and we can meet hopefully with Jean in between the next town meeting. But um, that would be my only question for Jean is when do these grant cycles run? Because we're pretty much tapped out.
Are you worried, are you worried about the current grant that you received expiring?
Well, the grant we received will not expire until next June, so we're good on that grant. We're more concerned of the grant cycles for application and funding for making up the difference in cost prior to actually trying to launch this next spring. Because I know VLT, the tag, all those things that we work with, um, they're, they're out till spring 2024. So if you know of ones that would be in fall and the winter of '23, then absolutely hands down, let's go find the public money. If not, then I would still want to put the ask to the town to make up the difference.
Jean, are you able to answer that? Are these grants available in time for them to launch by spring?
You have to check the availability of, of the individual grants. Um, that's an ongoing thing.
We'll do some homework.
We'll do some meeting with Jean then and hopefully come back to the town at the next meeting with a better idea of what grants are available, when they're available, what our difference is and what the ask needs to be.
And importantly, to dig, to allow you all time to do what you would like to do at start and finish, yeah.
Hey, if you can find $20,000 in grant funding, I, I would vote to let me the money until it came through.
Okay, well, I don't think you know. Well, I'd love to check on that.
I don't know, I mean, you know, I don't think it'd be worked out.
Okay. Would we be able to ask permission to start the project from the town with it being public property? And at least get a vote on via Elton Alliance and be doing a contractor to start work on the building? I mean, if our gap's 2,000 and we're using a local contractor, the amount of time to get this done and start work, I think all of our other questions would be answered. But I know we had talked with Michelle on, you know, the fact that we need to touch a public building or a town building.
Is that our purview laws to give them permission or can they do that on their own?
Uh, we own the property, so the town is to give permission, but um, I'm not sure what we'll give them permission for maintenance specifically. Probably need a little detail from the contractor exactly doing the work.
What's your first move to painting and the restoration?
Everything on the repairs to current structure project goes the first page of the presentation, the 20,330 dollars. It gives the estimate for 12,450 and 7,880, which would be the details of this whole work.
If I could just interject, how about if you've already presented the entire package? If you break out just the structural work, we could leave the balance of the 2,000 and sum up. If you will put that in writing to the board, showing that out specifically, clearly the 6,000 is a, a bigger amount.
Sure.
You'll be working to see if you can um offset that, but if you were to come back with what I just said, the balance of 2,000, that structural work, and then see if we can begin right there. Does that make sense?
We can do that or we can just extract the page of the PowerPoint that has it. Here, I'll show you.
I understand, I'm looking right at it.
Oh, okay.
The reason I'm asking that is is the official request from your lines to mayor commissioners? And it's not just simply a presentation. And then we can read and say, the work begins here, this is the amount for the work. We're asking you specifically for the 2,000 and change. For the balance of that and then moving forward from there.
So you want to come back to a next meeting and say exactly what you just said? And even not any done?
I need something from the contractor that's reporting the work.
Okay, I'll, I'll submit the.
Because it's an unknown, I have to know what.
Oh, yeah, sure. Who the contractor is, you do. That part I absolutely, I can scan that included as well.
Do I help?
We're good? Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. So you have your marching orders for that?
Yes, yes, we do. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. And one last question I know that does pretend that, so you're a few weeks or a few days away from your fall fest. Are you making headline, making necessary changes in spite of downtown?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we have now the vendors spaced out behind Power Street across from the farmer's market area. So we're putting our adventure zone down there as well as the vendors that um would be displaced because of the fence around the Minnehage building. So we have taken care of that, being able to expand, keep, or to sustain and extend a little bit to be able to be downtown that way.
So even in that case, how many vendors would you be losing? Because I'm not, you still have the same amount.
Yeah, we're, we're not losing any now because we're able to utilize that space.
Okay.
Yeah. Before, last year we had 96 vendors, we're over 100 this year. We're accommodating all of them. Um, if you remember back years ago, we did the firefighters' challenge in that back parking lot.
Sure did.
It's done, it's gone unutilized for quite a few years because we weren't sure exactly what was the most beneficial to put back there without being overlooked. So we think we've got a really good handle on that.
Yeah.
Especially with the 26-foot rock wall. That, that'll be a good visibility for the uh vendors back in that area.
And certainly you drew a lot of attention back there as well. Okay, Los George, Town Administrators Report Proclamation Board 82023.
2023, recognizing that call recovery month. Whereas National Recovery Month has observed in September each year to recognize evidence-based treatments and recovery patient, uh practices for patients afflicted with addiction. Whereas the goal of National Recovery Month is to encourage patients and families who currently have an addiction to celebrate with those who experience fulfillment and recovery. Whereas Mayor Commissioners found it often recognize the dedication of healthcare providers, community partners who provide support for patients and their families. Now therefore, the Mayor Commission, he found it often nearby, September 2023 as National Recovery Month.
Do we need a motion? Oh, that's the stuff.
You typically do a motion.
Pardon?
You typically do a motion.
Okay. Although in favor of the proclamation that was next reported, uh, use a sign.
Aye.
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 No opposed, motion is carried.
That's it.
Okay, we did have on the agenda uh, uh, conversation with sideline properties, but we will do that tonight at the uh six o'clock meeting. What's now brings up uh any report from anybody that's sitting here or anything that's pertinent, anything that needed to be told? Anything that you feel needs to be done? No special word?
I've got nothing today, sir.
There's none coming from us, but we have a hand in the audience, Danielle.
I did want to just really quickly ask on behalf of the Alliance, the, our camera system that we have on, uh, on Main Street, we've got a little bit of an electrical problem going on and I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board. We've had ERP out more times than last three weeks than we've probably had in two years to the point where we do feel that there's an electrical issue in the Elton Alliance building. Um, I know Dan has been out the last week on vacation. Public Works has been amazing in his absence, but we would like to request that maybe we have an electrician come out to check on it. I know for a while we had to run an extension cord all the way into the building uh for our first Friday night when the cameras went down and the electric had an issue, so just wanted to make that formal request to the board.
Didn't you guys say, was that Dan?
Okay, everybody in the week, let's get off.
Oh, sweet. Thank you, Dan.
And um.
He's getting over work.
But did you tell me that the issues started after you put the sound system in for the speakers?
I did um say, I don't know about the exact timing, but when I talked to Dan and his team about it, he said they're on totally different frequencies and it can't be related at all. Something to do with that pole. Could just be a simple GFCI. It, it could be just a little powering or something that went faulty in, in the outlet, because we do have outlets on poles, so.
All right.
Okay, with that being said, is there anyone in the audience? Uh, we got you. And if there's anyone online, you will be unmuted if you indicate that you'd like to speak. So those two factions, but we do have Elton Fire Department, yes, sir. It's your time.
I have a couple of things I think for, for the board. Um, as you know, for the last four years, we've been talking about funding. Uh, recently, uh, we were advised that uh our rating of number of three uh for, and that this would be insurance service office, which is the measuring stick of fire departments. Our rating is at risk uh because of our ladder trucks being 1995 and being out of service more than it's in service. Uh, and what that means to the town is that people's fire insurance could go up as much as 25% uh which is not as significant for individual homeowners, but it's very significant for businesses, which will affect your ability to recruit uh businesses to move to Elton. The, in the interim, uh, we've, we've entered into a contract of about $2.4 million uh with a manufacturer of ladder trucks. It'll take three years to build and uh to offset the uh, the lack of our ladder truck being functional. In addition to that, we're required to have two ladder trucks, one in reserve, which we have no ladder truck in reserve. So when the one that we do have uh goes out of service, which is quite frequently, uh, we literally have to manufacture parts for it. The parts are no longer available. Uh, so we, and because we have no reserve, uh, the town has no ladder truck in service when that breaks down, which again, it happens quite frequently. So we've, we've been talking to the town now for some four years, requesting a change in the charter uh to the mill levy up to 7.5. And uh, we are now officially asking the board to make a move on, on that charter amendment uh to get that funding going. We now don't feel we can even do the uh, the slow move into the funding. We need, we need that permanent funding right away. Our, our, our call volume keeps increasing. Uh, you hear the sirens on a daily basis going up and down the street. And uh, we're, we're at 7,000 calls now. Uh, that's a, that's a call every hour. And an ambulance call takes an hour to go through the process of responding, taking care of the patient, taking you to the hospital and returning that. On average, it takes about 55 minutes. So you can imagine that when you have a call an hour and you have multiple calls simultaneously, um, it, it puts a pretty big stress on, on the system and on the equipment. Uh, we're having a very difficult time on personnel. Recruiting and retaining volunteers is, is almost an impossibility. It's not an Elton problem, it's a national problem. Uh, but we have to deal with it and right now we did a study and we require about 23 people on duty 24 hours a day. And that's volunteers and career people combined. So uh, right now on, on, on the average fire call, uh, which would require 13 people minimum, we average six. And the only way to fix that is we need more, we need more career people, which again is more funding. So we're, we're at a, a pretty big Y in the road and we're officially asking the board to act now and uh, and amend, amend the charter for the current fiscal year.
Sam, what's the, what's the expectation of the fire company board for additional revenue? What, what revenue are you looking for? Where are you going?
Well, the additional revenue from the town, which would go, which would go from a hundred, about $140,000 to $1.2 million with that change in uh the mill levy. In addition to that, um, and for the last four years, we've been going the other direction and trying to save money. Over time, that, that savings is, is short-term benefit and long-term detriment. So all those things that we've been putting off to save money are now, you know, coming back to hurt us. And uh, foregoing maintenance of buildings, foregoing maintenance apparatus, those kinds of things. Uh, so uh, once we get the mill levy, that will give us a, a breather. And then we're also talking to the county to, to fund. Right now, we respond to 87% of the emergency medical calls in the town. And the other 13% is augmented by the county. Uh, what we're going to do once we get to the next phase, talking with the county, uh, we want them to fund that last 13% so we can respond to all the calls ourselves uh within the town. And that, that combined with the additional funding from the town will, will uh serve us pretty well.
So the 1.2 million is what you're looking for?
1.2 million from the town and with additional funding from the uh county.
Say it again.
Right now, we receive about a million dollars from the county.
7,000 calls for what period to what period?
That's annually.
That's just annual?
Yeah, and that number is increasing. Our, we're, we're on uh, we're on pace right now to, to go beyond that this year. And it's the calendar, we operate on a calendar.
And what does the county contribute now? What?
They're about a million dollars. So our operational budget, which does not include capital expenses, about uh one-third from the county and two-thirds from the fire company. And the fire company can, we no longer have the ability to gen, you can't sell enough sandwiches to fund a fire department, you just can't do it. If we were Hacks Point or some smaller community, uh, you can still, you can still do that. But with the volume of calls that we're responding to and the types of calls and the type of service, uh, the town indicated at the last meeting, they didn't want us to reduce service. And our only choices are to increase revenue or reduce service. And uh, and I'm, I'm sure nobody wants us to reduce service.
You say reduce service, does that mean somebody's house burns down?
That means we no longer provide paramedics, we can't provide EAPs. Uh, and the next level would be we, we would just be first responders. We would just show up, throw you in the ambulance and haul you to the hospital with no incremental services. I don't, I don't think the public uh would want, would want us to do that. Uh, right now, we provide the highest level of service in the county. And uh, I think, and I think the board indicated, again, at the last meeting, they didn't want us to reduce that level of service. Um, but there is a point where, yeah, we wouldn't be going to fires either. I mean, at, at some point, you know, the carousel will stop.
If somebody dies of a heart attack because of no paramedic?
Actually, that's on the government, that's not on us. We do this voluntarily.
No, I don't mean that. Not your fault. I'm just saying, critical service is critically needed sometimes.
Absolutely, and, and, and that level of service is, is increasing. Absolutely. And that level of service is increasing. And there's a socio-economic driver going on here in that if you look at the number of people in the town, that's not really increasing all that significantly, but our volume of calls are going up drastically. And part of that is the population and socio-economics. So as the economic point of our population goes down, the services required goes up. And that's just, that's just a fact of life. People in Glen Farms don't call for ambulances very much. People in downtown Elton call twice a day.
So in order to generate the money that you're needing, we would, if I'm correct, Steve, we would have to raise taxes nine cents, correct?
Ballpark, yeah. One penny's about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
So nine cents per?
Nine hundred, if you guessed that, one point two, one point nine. It'd be both, I guess.
Yeah, when I asked for those, that kind of numbers, I was thinking about what they're asking for, what trash is asking for, what the sewer fund is asking for. And we have got to get together over just financial, you know, discussion on all these.
What are sewer tracks should be paid for by the users of that service?
True, but we're gonna have, well.
I guess what she's saying, rather than do this intermittently, this becomes very serious with all these increases that to see. And there has to be answers, and I guess we have to come up with explanations thereof because, you know, a lot of this is not last minute, as he's speaking right there.
It's inevitable. It's inevitable. And we're gonna have to understand it, we're gonna have to present it, we're gonna have to be able to explain it. Because it's going to be a jolt to the citizens all across the board. I know, I know. And I don't know how we're gonna address it yet. I mean, we haven't really had, you know, detailed discussions about it as a whole. But I certainly would like to do that sooner than later.
I have it for next week's workshop. Are you going to workshop it, John?
You do. And then also maybe a follow-up to our meeting with, over the water issues. The artesian usage, our, you know, all those things that we discussed, water leakage in that one meeting. I would like to even know, you know, what our options are there. We haven't had any feedback from that meeting at all. I saw a little bit of discussion with Ryan Flickinger about our, you know, how much water we can draw or how we might be able to address increasing our permits, things like that. But they all add up and we need to know what our options are so we can build a, you know, like a strategic plan here. Okay.
Because we understood at the last meeting that we were waiting for the verbiage from Lu.
I'm sorry?
We were waiting for the charter change wording, I think was, how it was presented last, at the last meeting.
I had discussed several options with the mayor, but there's not been any decisions made.
Yeah.
So we would like to request the board to actually vote and vote on to proceed. We've been having this conversation for four years now.
Well, true. That's true. But it's not just putting a verbiage in the charter, it's knowing that we can fund it.
I understand.
I understand.
And how we're gonna fund it. And like I said, it's a package deal with everything that we've got. Getting this right.
If the trash is not picked up, if the park is not moved, people don't die. This is, this is a serious thing.
We know that.
And it is the government's responsibility to do this. And we have been on our backs doing what the government is required to do. And we're just asking the government to step up to the real minimum. If we had to create an Elton Fire Department, a department of the town in Elton, it would cost as much as EPE.
Right, well, Sam, it's not, I mean, you know we want to help you.
I know you do.
But you're not asking us, you're asking every citizen in town. And we have to weigh that and we have to figure out how that's gonna affect everybody.
We appreciate that, and we're asking you to, whatever it is you need to do, we're asking you to do it, Brian. We've been talking about it for, like I said, four years now. The trash guys came in in one meeting and made their case, and all of a sudden, it's gonna happen.
I don't think it matters comparison, we're understanding, or at least I am understanding where you're coming from. And, you know, some things have more importance than others, you know, put that on importance from one to ten. But, you know, four years, it's a long time, but yet, it's still not a long time when you're talking about resources and coming up or whatever you need to make everybody happy or make everybody part of that piece of cake that you have. It's certainly understood.
And we're not trying to be irrevocable, and I apologize for that.
That's the way you came off first, that's what you said.
I apologize for my passion, but we're in trouble.
Well, we have passion too, and you know, God bless the ARCA funds.
If it wasn't for ARCA, we would have had this conversation in a long time.
They were our saving grace.
Absolutely.
And you guys certainly were on the extreme top of that list. No one received funds like you.
No, and we appreciated that.
If we could, you know, do more, we certainly would have done that, even to buy time.
Which we did.
Which we did.
Which we did.
It is, and nobody knows more than the five of us what we're looking at as far as taxes. I'm just trying to convey to you that if we change our tax rate, it's going to be affecting more than just the fire company. There's other issues we have to consider.
I understand.
And that's what we are in the process of doing. And it's not a good place to be.
I mean, we, just to give you an example, when I started in fire service here, we had six fire engines and a ladder truck, three ambulances. Today, we only have four fire engines, a ladder truck that's no longer stationary, and four ambulances going to five times the number of calls. So it, where we are right now is, we're in a, we're in a predicament. So I don't.
I agree.
I guess that's all I had to say. Thank you very much. I would like to be able to pay something back to our board that.
That's definitive?
What's, just what is your response?
Well, basically, she said that we're gonna have a workshop, we've heard from you. And the powers that be will get together to find out exactly what we can do to accommodate those as soon as possible.
Thank you, I really do appreciate that.
And like Lois said, we have language that's written, has to be altered, but, you know, trying to find the means for finances and resources, and as Gene's been mentioning, that's big.
And the answer may be no, I get that. We need to know how to go forward with the power of law going forward.
Understood.
Okay.
We know.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience would like to speak online, would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please.
Yes, I was just wondering if there's any status update on the eyesore that sits in the middle of the town formerly known as Minnehans?
Lois, why don't you address that in a few words?
The answer is no.
Kind of the town?
The town doesn't own the building. The town doesn't have any authority to demolish it. And it's an issue with the owners and their insurance authority. That's what I can say.
The town has a fencing, right? Correct? It's the town fencing, though, right? Is that, that's my question.
We rented it. Hold on a second.
Yeah, the fences, I apologize.
Right, right, the fence has been running for a year, yes, we rented the fence for public safety purposes.
I mean, all of us here have been apprised of what's going down there, but I guess we could have given the same answer that Lois gave. You know, it doesn't look good, fencing could be there much longer, so status quo, day by day, to see what can happen. If anyone has a match of wine out there, you can please step up and assess that.
I don't believe we can pull the fencing away until all danger of debris falling. And obviously, that's, we're a long ways from that, the rafters are still up there, have burned through. There's still lights hanging from wires. I don't know what the holdup is on knocking some of that down to get rid of that safety issue. I would hope that that's gonna be one of our next steps. But I don't know, we're not even involved in that.
We can't touch it, Senator.
We don't think it would be one of their next steps.
Is there any pressure on the owners for the fact that public safety is involved? The town has an ongoing expense in the rental of a fence to have a structural report completed. That's the only thing that truly is required to make any type of change with what's currently there. We, as the Alliance, were looking for grant funds to try and help the private owners, but it's three to four thousand dollars, which we've gotten a quote from a local engineering firm. So that's my only thought, if the grass is too high, you cut the grass and they get a bill. If you're having an expense, I don't know if there's anything, but that's just a question, I guess.
Just as a simple guess, you're, it may even be out of the owner's hands. It may be their insurance company who's gonna do what they do, and I appreciate that. So that might be, that's part of it.
You can chip on, let him give a few comments if you will, Billy.
I think he should be on and unmuted.
Yes, I copied everyone on a letter that was sent to the Minnehans last week requesting that they have an engineer evaluate the safety of the structure of the building. They did receive the letter, I got the signed receipt card back, but I have not heard anything from them to this point if they have received a letter requesting that.
Well, and I'd like to thank the town for that effort against.
I mean, right now, we're talking about debris coming down, but thankfully, we haven't had a whole lot of rain or wind or anything lately. That could change anything now. And every time you have a lot of wind and rain, you're gonna have, you're gonna keep having debris fall off that building because it's all just light now. And at least if the owners could get in there and get it cleaned up to where we don't have that problem, maybe look so there, if we can get the fencing down, once the safety problem is being resolved.
Right, then, you can't touch that property or get there itself. I understand the point about the debris and other things, but hands off right now until we get some definitive answers from somebody more powerful than we. And last but not least, Mr. Rodriguez, would you make an introduction to not only us again, to the people sitting in the audience and people online?
Yes. Good afternoon. I just want to formally introduce Danielle Pelagati. She's our new HR specialist in town in Elton. She has over twenty years of HR experience, very diverse background. So I'm gonna formally introduce her and welcome her to the team.
Yes, it was nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you as well, thank you.
You don't have to sing or anything, Danielle.
I'll be so quiet right now.
And with one oh five at this time, we will conclude our meeting. We will return this evening unless there's any closing.
Well, I didn't know if Mr. Brown or anything, did you understand why we were deferring our support until six o'clock tonight?
We didn't, but that's okay, we're here for whenever you want us.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know.
Believe me, a few more hours, we'll be happy to be back.
Well, basically, we want to be unified with the total board, making the decision, the gathering's gonna be the same, so.
We appreciate that.
All be on this one accord.
Thank you very much.